Evening. The special meeting on Monday evening, April 19th. And Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gofuls. Councilmember Papin.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to promote or how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed into Zoom, use the call feature to raise your hand or use the raise your hand feature, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. And when you're called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment for the period of that specific item. The first item on the agenda, we're going to be going into closed session. So after the clerk reads the title, I will ask if there is anyone from the public wishing to participate in public comment. And we will then move into closed session and return soon for study session item number two.
Mr. Mayor, the closed session item is conference with real property negotiators per government code section 54956.8. And I have one hand raised. And James Rugomaias, Hugo Gomez, sorry. I've allowed you to talk. Thank you, James.
Hi, James Rogomes here. Hi, Mayor Rodriguez, honorable city council members, hardworking city staff. My name's James Rogomes. I'm here representing San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council. And I would just like to make some comments in regards to this purchase agreement or this study session you're going into. We at the Building Trades feel that it's important to convert prevailing wage projects, which is contractor committed to, into community workforce agreement projects. As you guys know through your wage studies of wage theft, that wage theft is very prevalent and it's very easy to commit wage theft onto construction workers in the prevailing wage arena. That is because there's no office of labor standard enforcement and the city has no office to enforce prevailing rate. Therefore, it's up to the the unions or the worker to complain to the Department of Industrial Relations. By creating a PLA, now known as a Community Workforce Agreement, because it offers benefits back to the community by hiring local contractors, local workers, local apprentices, returning veterans from helmets to hard hats, that this would be a good project for you guys to create a good policy through a community workforce agreement. Community workforce agreement follows the working family platform, just like every elected official has a platform of good schools, safe streets, good hospitals, and affordable housing. Our platform for for working families is earn a decent wage. Even though we earn a decent wage, half our money is going to rents and mortgages, healthcare, not only healthcare for the worker, but healthcare for the family, retirement. The retirement dollars get invested back into our infrastructures through real estate investments and municipal bonds. So when you have a bond measure, a lot of times you borrow the money from our union members. So it's a way to recycle the money. And finally, training that we have, we spend a billion dollars a year between us and the firefighters on training to ensure that the project's done right the first time, on time, and on budget. And our apprentices leave their apprenticeship program with college credits. So this is an easy lift for the city of San Mateo. We have a community workforce agreement on your wastewater treatment plant, and it seems like it would be a good policy. I am available for all developers to get ahold of me, to reach out to the Building Trades Council so we can negotiate a community workforce agreement. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today. And when people ask me what a union is, alls a union is is working families standing together. And we hope we could count on the city of San Mateo to stand with our working families. Thank you so much. It's an exciting project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other speakers.
All right, then we will enter closed session. I'll see everybody there and then we'll return back after that closed session for item number two. Thanks.
Oh, teams, thank you. I'm looking. Thank you. Okay, I'm still in that one. Okay, thank you. I don't want to come back later. Yeah, it would. It would. It's not a, it's not an, it would be a very public process. And it would require a general comment. Sandy, we're hearing you in the public meeting. You need to sign off a Zoom. Oh, I thought I did.
Am I the first one here?
Nope.
Oh. Not that I'm competitive or anything.
Gina was here, but she had to leave. Okay, we have. Waiting for ammo and.
Rich brought his tuba tonight in case we need it.
Always ready.
We're just waiting on Rick and is Emma going to rejoin?
She didn't say otherwise, but.
There she is.
Okay. Are we, we're recording now? Are we good, good to continue, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are. I was just looking for council member. Oh, there he is. Okay. Very good. Mr. Mayor, the next item on our agenda is a study session on. The council guidelines. Update and the boards and commissions update. And with your permission, I'm going to go ahead and take you through that.
Yes, please.
Okay. So the first thing, just a little bit of background. Council adopted these guidelines to provide clarity and governing themselves in August 2015. Up until then, there are a few loose documents that were referred to, but were not easily found. And they weren't comprehensively woven together. Since that time, there've been five previous amendments. These changes. Are occur because they're required to either reflect new laws. Best practices, emerging best practices, or when it's discovered, some of the guidelines are just not working the way we've anticipated. The boards and commission rules and procedures mirror the council guidelines wherever needed. And when we've done these updates, we've always taken them together in tandem so that they would be. In alignment as much as possible. So the purpose again of this is this is council's rules for governing the conduct of its own business. It's your document. We're asking for your feedback on if you want to see these proposed changes. If we're missing anything in the proposal. Or if there are certain language changes to what is proposed. So. A little bit about the update process. Initially, I consulted with the mayor and reviewed notes and comments from council members since the last update. Which was conducted in May 2018. So oftentimes council members were saying, I don't think that really works good. Me and I'll make a note of that. And so I circled back to all of those previous notes. I reviewed the proposed updates with the city manager and certain key staff. Who are subject matter experts in certain areas. So. First off, it was finance director richly provided updated language in the financial matters section. In order to bring some outdated sections up to date, aligned with current best practices. For public agencies and to better align with the city's own travel policies because there are two different documents. And it did, it seemed like they should be in alignment. Human resources director Casey Echarte. Updated the mission for the personnel board to reflect its current activities. And was very helpful in making the text gender neutral throughout both. Communications managers Samantha Weigle and I took a couple of seminars on new social media law. And impacts and best practices that went into effect this January 2021. We received a sample policy from the city of Durham and borrowed some language from that. And then finally, legal city attorney, acting city attorney Gabrielle Wieland. Reviewed the social media section to confirm. That we are referencing and explaining the new law correctly. And provided guidance where there has been case law in this new area. And all of these key staff are on this call to answer any questions or to provide clarification. I also asked all commission staff liaisons to comment on the boards and commission rules. Just to bring to my attention if they felt there were any unclear areas that probably could do with an update. So I'm gonna. There are 10 main areas of update. You'll, you'll notice there were minor updates throughout that just to bring up to date. What we're currently doing. For instance, we no longer. Drive mail to council members' house on Thursday. So we took that out. We, I'm going to review these in chronological order. So you may just follow along in the guidelines. The page numbers noted there. I'll give a high level review and then I'll circle back with you to seek feedback on these. So I'm just going to dive in right now. So the first one is adjourning meetings due to power outages. This is on your page 12. So in the time of rolling blackouts that we've experienced in the last couple of years. We noticed that other cities had language like this right on their agendas, and we thought it was a good practice to embed it in ours too. So we're recommending that if we're not able to correct the situation in 15 minutes, we just automatically adjourn to. The next regular meeting and carry it forward. The next one is the pills were expanded. We've had two tenant relocation hearings and it became really obvious in holding those hearings. That the landlords got 15 minutes to talk about their story, but the tenants didn't have. A formal. Process in that. So we wanted to embed. That they had an equal amount of time to the landlord. Who was trying not to do the paying, not to pay them for the relocation costs. So we added that component. The next one is ceremonial guidance. This, this one is particularly helpful to us clerks. To give us some parameters around how much time to allow under ceremonial. Before moving along to the business of the meeting. And so we clarified that we think up to three items should be the norm for in there. And a little bit about if there is a presentation slides, let's keep it short. Just to make sure that we can get to the actual business of the meeting. The next one is scheduling an item, and this is just clarification. We wanted to make the language stronger that a, it requires a vote. Of the entire council to place an item on the agenda. That any related materials for proposed items such as a resolution of support. Be shared if a council member is going to propose that with all of council earlier on. So everybody knew what they were going to be talking about. They had a version of it in front of them. And we also added some guidance that staff will attempt to provide. Estimated staff time needed. If the request being added or is a significant work program item. So we put in a little bit of language around that the council may want to consider. The next one is the financial matters section. And as noted earlier, these are proposed best practices that put us in alignment with the citywide travel policy. And I know Rich is on the line. If you had additional questions on that. The next section is communication. First, I want to, we clarified how written comment on an item is handled after agenda packet publishing. Because we've had some. Unclear direction on that, especially for members of the public. So we wanted to codify it, if we will, into your rules. So we're all on the same page about how that's handled. It is handled in a very transparent way.
Madam Clerk, do you have another slide or?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much.
Of course.
So the second and most more substantial is the addition of a social media use section. And this is probably the most robust change being proposed. And there is a need to document it as the new law is so nuanced. And these platforms in social media are ever changing and new ones are emerging all the time. The law is doing an attempt to catch up here and provide brownout guidance for council members when they interact with each other over social media. So what we proposed here, there's a definition section. A section on what is permitted and what is prohibited. What to consider from a first amendment lands, the public records act and lands. And general guidance on best practices. And I just want to note for the record that in the boards and commission rules and procedure. The social media section was not included in the proposal that's in front of you right now. Acting city attorney Weiland researched this and has advised that we should include it in their rules and procedures as a best practice. Noting that there's not yet legal authority addressing commissioners. But the same reasoning would apply that if a commissioner. Has a social media platform in which they're discussing city business, the same rules or it's thought should apply. But again, there's no clear legal guidance on that yet. The next section is legislation. This was an attempt to clarify a process. When there is a press. An urgent need to respond quickly to legislation. That if we can't convene an entire council meeting because of the timing constraints. That we refer back to the ledge committee, which is comprised of the mayor and deputy mayor. To take those steps right away. It just provides clarity around that, or we're seeking to provide clarity around that. And number eight is the council appointments and liaison process. For their annual appointments. So based on this year's process, we were able to accomplish it in one meeting. And we proposed the removal of listing the continuity appointments inside the guidelines. Because since this was last updated in 2018. Council has indicated additional. Bodies they want to be designated as continuity. And so what was in our council guidelines was out. And so what was in our council guidelines was out of practice with what we were actually saying and how we were conducting business. So I want to be clear, no continuity commissions were removed. The original ones were C CAG Emergency Services Council, San Francisco Airport Community Roundtable. The San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce and DSMA. And the Planning Commission. What's been added is Peninsula Clean Energy, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. South Bayside Waste Management Authority and the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. The other. Change we wanted to point out is the Council of Cities. City Selection Committee Appointment Process. This is again a same kind of a move to give flexibility when there's not time or it's not practical. To call together a full city council meeting before a city selection vote. So it gives guidance for the mayor to confer with a deputy mayor in those instances before taking a vote. So that there is a process or, or a sort of a check between two of the members. And you can see in a couple of places, we've referred back to your already set up committee of legislative committee of mayor and deputy mayor. And then finally, the thing I want to bring to your attention is the. Boards and commission reappointment process. This, this has always been a little bit murky for us. It, it, this seeks to involve the appointment subcommittee, which is the mayor and the liaison to the commission. To direct me about whether they want to convene a meeting. We're not talking about give direction on a point this or don't appoint that or the content on just, we need a meeting. I need to have some guidance on that as we're pulling through this. So this just adds that component to that. So quickly, that is just a high level review of what we're proposing. I know you've had it in front of you. I want to ask if there's other updates needed. Are there any changes required in some of the proposals that we have done? And, and I've listed them here quickly again. And after feedback is received, we will incorporate all of them. We then into the two different policy documents and we'll bring it back for you on the consent calendar on May 3rd. So I have the documents open in front of me and I'm happy to take your feedback or direction.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Excellent presentation. Do we have any questions from council? And I see somebody, Joe, or council member Gothos.
Patrice, Madam Clerk, with regards to reappointment or appointment of new commissioners. Remind me what this, what the proposal is for keeping. A list and how long we would keep that list. Do we, is there a proposal for that?
You know, actually, it's, it just alludes to it in here. It's not fine tuned. But the, how we've been acting is that a list is similar. To how we operate in the city. It would be good for up to one year. Provided the appointment subcommittee has given direction. Through clear direction of both appointment subcommittee members. To this person is on the list, this person's on the list, this person's on the list. So I think you're right. We have an opportunity to embed that a little more clearly in the policy.
I, I guess what I'm looking for is where. Let's, let's make that opportunity available to subcommittees. So that they can do that. And then. I'd appreciate your feedback, Madam Clerk, on, on where we would keep that and what formally would have to happen and how long that list could last. I would. I would propose that a list when we do a recruitment and we get a good batch of potential commissioners. Just off the top of my head, I would say up to two, up to two potential people on. On a list who are eligible to be nominated if, if there's another opening. Without going back to doing, to do more interviews. So long as it's clear at the time of the interviews that those two people are really great and we would want to appoint them if. If a vacancy happened in the next 12 months.
Thank you, Councilmember Gothos. I think that belongs in chapter 12 under the boards and commissions and. I can do some proposed language. In there to make, provide clarity around that and up to two people eligible, identified as eligible on that list and that the preference is, is that we. Go back to the eligibility list when there's an unscheduled vacancy or after we've had interviews for up to one year. And the other council members.
Can I just have one additional piece of feedback, which is Madam Clerk, this is a phenomenal job and I appreciate all the work that you put into it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gothos.
Go ahead, Emma, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a clarifying question for the list would. Would the eligibility list, would that be ranked? As part of our process?
We, we have done that recently. Would you like that included in the rules?
I, I think it's, I see an advantage to making that explicit. So that we know how to prioritize. Given the next open, opening.
Okay, I can certainly embed that.
Okay, and I was wondering about the, the one year expiration for the list. Commissioners hold their seats for four years. And some of them tend to leave in the third year or the second year and. If we have a list with at least two on it. If, and if they're still available here, living here and interested. I don't know why we would not want to call them first. And if they don't live here or they're not interested, then we can move on to opening the process up. So I think maybe two years might be better.
If, if we have two years, should we maybe make it three? People then? That's just one. Some idea, but.
So the one thing I will say is that. It often takes more than one interview to get on a commission that these seats are highly sought after. And things may change in that amount of time. You just may want to consider that to. Give more members of the public an opportunity to serve when they're so willing to, to volunteer and serve and want to serve in this capacity. So that should probably maybe be considered too.
This is true. And recently we're seeing a lot of interest, so that's good.
Do we have any other questions? Before we open up public comment? Okay, see none. I'd like to open up a public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
I do not see any hands raised.
Right now. Not seeing any. Okay, last chance. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And we'll bring it back to council for any, any final direction or comments. Councilmember Lee.
I just wanted to loop back about the question of how long the eligibility list would be maintained and valid. I think that. With, with the sort of renewed effort to do. Deeper outreach to recruit a more diverse pool of, of candidates that's more reflective of our community. That, that tho- that those efforts are, are, are continuing and sort of, you know, being re-energized. And so I could see an advantage to keeping the, the window smaller to like a year instead of two years. Because you would get. You would be able to. Make, you know, take advantage of, of those efforts more readily. So this is a sort of a counterpoint to, to the idea of extending the time.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, that overall I approve suggested changes. And I happen to agree right now with Councilmember Lee. That in the interest of seeking to more diversify some of our commissions and committees. The Joe's, Councilmember Gothos' original suggestion there, one year and two. Eligibility members would be a good suggestion.
Great. Yeah, I, I agree with, oh, there's another. Yeah, I definitely agree with that because, you know, things change. And we don't want to have it where, where if you're, you know, you just graduated from the city services academy and you're, you want to apply, but you realize, oh, somebody's already locked in for two years. So. I, I think that makes a total sense and. Any other last comments before we close out this item?
I just have one question on the continuity of assignments. It says. There's a, a set body of assignments that are required or they would like to have strong need and desire for continuity. But then they've been deleted out of there and then the council is to look every year. As to whether or not these assignments should still be ones that we consider desirable for continuity's sake. Kind of seems counterintuitive or that we're going to re-reach here for continuity, even though we say there should be continuity. So I'm not sure how that's supposed to work.
Do you have any? Comments on that?
Our clerk can clarify for me.
Well, the goal there was to take it out of the guidelines because they were not. What council had directed in the appointment, the last three years in the appointment reviews. There have been additional bodies identified as needing to be continuity. So I wanted to just allow that to happen in that process. And not have to come back to this guiding document where we list them. It seemed to me that it. The, the document here tells us what the process is. But the who that goes on it can happen in a different venue at the appointments. Review meeting. And it seems to make sense at the annual one, but I can change the language in any way you recommend to tighten that up. Or we can list them all back in at council's direction.
So if I may, through the mayor. What I'm thinking maybe we could do then, so what you've described is what's come up lately is, is the need to supplement the list.
Yes.
Rather than to change the list. So maybe we could put language in there about supplementing the list.
Okay.
What is the difference between change and supplement?
Well, change means you would remove things that you already thought needed continuity. And my point is, if you think they need continuity, continuity, why are you reviewing them every year? That doesn't lend itself to continuity. So you would keep the ones that you think need continuity, but what our clerk has just described is. Some of these ones we have come up now where we thought there should be continuity and it would be the interest. Of the council or there has been the interest of the council to supplement that existing list.
What if we said every year while we're assigning these, if any council member wants to. Suggest changes to that list, they may otherwise. Otherwise it stays the same each year. So if somebody, if somebody, a majority of council members want to add X, then we add it if they want to subtract it, but it just stays the same unless. It kind of adds that, that. It incorporates the updating process without creating a bunch of work.
The council may make changes or additions annually as it sees fit.
Yeah, I mean, the way, if, if, the way I would organize it would be when everybody's sending in their preferences as that part, there could just be another line. You know, do you, do you see any, do you, do you want to add or subtract any continuity appointments? Usually it's going to be none, but you know, one year, there might be some big deal that you want to, and that's where you add it. And then during the finalizing meeting, the clerk will say, hey, you know, several council members wanted to add this or subtract that, then that's when it's updated.
And, and the ones that were added, like they were new entities that were formed like Peninsula Clean Energy and the San Mateo Consolidated Fire District. So they didn't exist when we did this. Originally.
Okay, well. Do you have everything you need, Madam Clerk?
I have, yes, I have the feedback on those two areas and I will draft that up and if, is there no other feedback at this time?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you. Excellent job on that.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll see you in the next meeting.
Okay, that's the final, final item on this and we'll adjourn this meeting and we'll see everybody in about five minutes.